Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of Wednesday, February 22. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We do have a couple of public hearings this evening. I do want to keep things moving tonight, in particular because we're not quite sure what the weather's going to be later on. So with that, I will remind you, when we do open the public hearing, rules established many years ago before my time. If you could limit your comments, please, to three minutes, we would appreciate that. Give everybody an opportunity to speak and we can continue to conduct our business. We do have a couple of minutes for the folks at home. If you could pan there, please, so let them know what we'll be discussing tonight. We have two public hearings relating to the Cooking Ham Farm, what we're calling the Lee Cooking Ham Farm, the east of Nine Properties, acquisition of a conservation easement, and also fee regarding those parcels. I'll give a brief explanation at the beginning of the public hearings about what the town board is contemplating. And we also will have, just prior to that, a very quick annual financial review as we do each year. The finances will be presented to the town board next week and will be available for a public consumption shortly thereafter. We're going to then briefly go over committee and department reports as well. So Patrick, if you'd be kind enough, let's do two minutes since we have it, and let's just bang out the annual financial review for the folks at home since we will be discussing money. These are just highlights of a report required, submission to the comptroller each and every year. Patrick, if you could go to the next page, please. At the conclusion of the year, we had actually increasing fund balances. That's money left over after we had all of our operations. We have made additional investments. We're at nearly 60 projects during my time that we've had here in the town of Red Hook. S&amp;P rates us AA, which is amongst the highest ratings out there for our financial solvency and strength. Results also include funding all current capital projects. Next slide, please, Patrick. Here are the remaining balances after we fund projects that we've concluded and projects that we're still in the middle of. You'll see in our various funds that we have over $7.8 million available in the unappropriated fund balances. Next slide, please. And they're detailed in the main funds, what the expenditures and revenues were versus expectations. Next slide, please. And these are some of the balances remaining on projects that are currently underway. Next slide. Let's change that. Okay, since we're discussing money, it's a good idea to give you a current... Sorry, it's not a public comment?
No, no, it's just about the slides.
Yeah. It's not a public comment, Gary?
I'm just asking you something about the slides. Can we get a copy of that individually for the townspeople?
I just said the entire report will be available to you next week, the entire report, not just the slides. Okay, moving right along. We are at 7:35. We do have our first public hearing. Deanna, would you be kind enough to read the public hearing notice?
Notice of public hearing regarding purchase of interest in lands under the community preservation program at Cooking Ham Farm East in the town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Red Hook on February 22, 2023, at 7:35 o'clock PM local time for the Cooking Ham Farm East described below at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, pursuant to town's Community Preservation Fund Program, CPF Program, to hear all interested persons regarding the acquisition of an interest or right in real property to preserve open space pursuant to Section 247 of the General Municipal Law, including the purchase of a contractual right necessary to achieve the purposes of such provisions for each such project. The town's purchase of a conservation easement interest is proposed to be financed from the CPF Program. The total project cost for the CPF Program acquisition is estimated not to exceed $1 million. Cooking Ham Farm East, application submitted by RTC Farm LLC for acquisition of conservation easement or a third-party enforcement right in a conservation easement with respect to approximately 112.94 plus-minus total acres consisting of the following parcels with the following approximate acreage, all located in the town of Red Hook, Dutchess County, New York. The parcels are listed below and in the notice and are owned by RTC Farm LLC and Mary L. Cooking Ham. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone 845-758-4606 so that arrangements can be made. Please take further notice that a copy of said application is available for review at the office of the town clerk, Red Hook Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. By order of the Town Board of the town of Red Hook, dated February 9, 2023, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. Patrick, could you show the map on the screen, please, at this point?
Sure.
For the folks at home, I'm sure you're all familiar with the Cooking Ham property. If you're not, it lies both in the village and the township of Red Hook on Route 9. Today, we are talking about the property that is east of Route 9. Good, and Patrick, if you'd be kind enough, if you could just take the corner of the screen here and maybe tilt it a little bit more so that the folks in the audience can see a little better.
Mr. Supervisor, did you take a motion to open the hearing?
Not yet.
Just wanted to make sure you just...
Yeah, I will, not to worry. Very good. Okay, and I'm just going to give you a brief description, then we'll open the public hearing and solicit your comments, and thank you very much. This is an assemblage of 10 parcels. In reality, there are really three significant-sized parcel. If you look on the screen towards your left, that's Albany Post Road or Route 9. You'll see at the bottom there of Route 9, you'll see Memorial Park, which, by the way, was donated by the Cooking Ham family back in 1942. What you have as far as the colors on the parcels there are the lands that are being farmed and soil types. The brownish color are prime soils. These are the best quality soils that exist in New York State. And then you have the small yellow areas there, which are soils of statewide significance, which are the second highest quality soils available. When the town adopted the Community Preservation Plan and an updated version back in 2019, it ranked hundreds and hundreds of parcels in the community that would be ideal for preservation using that dedicated fund source, the Community Preservation Fund. That's that real estate transfer fee above the median sales price gets contributed into this fund. That fund is now $3.4 million, if you'd like to know. And when they rank the parcels throughout the township, the portion over there on the right part of the screen, which is in the township, ranked the highest out of all of those 100 parcels. And in the plan itself, it says, when another parcel that is contiguous and part of an operation goes with another parcel, it shall be ranked the highest of the two, the project itself. So what we have in front of us tonight is the highest-ranked project listed in the town's adopted Community Preservation Plan. There are approximately 76 acres that are prime soils. There are approximately four or five acres of soils of statewide importance. What the town is contemplating doing and is required to do is to purchase the entire properties, including a house lot, which we will not retain. And we are putting an easement over approximately 94 acres out of a total of 112 acres in the totality of the 10 parcels. If you look down to the left there, you'll see a bit of a squiggly line in black. The areas that are north and east of that squiggly line are going to be the areas under conservation easement, with the exception of that flag lot up there at the top of the pond. There is an eight-plus or minus acre pond as part of the property, and the easement will not be on that house lot. The town is not contemplating retaining that house lot, but we are forced to acquire the property as a whole in order to preserve these agricultural and scenic resources. You'll see below the squiggly line there, it is contemplated, although it is not yet fully designed out, it is contemplated that that area, which lies fully in the village and is attached, roughly will be the area that will be available for some affordable housing for the community. What is unique about this project is that it marries two important goals of the township, which is to preserve important agricultural and open space assets, at the same time providing for additional housing and in particular, housing that is affordable to folks in our community. We are going to see single-family affordable housing, which you don't typically see in affordable housing projects here. So that also, when you consider the context, that is what is being contemplated. Now, I will tell you, however, that when the time comes for that project to be proposed, that will have to go in front of the Village Planning Board. And the Village Planning Board will ultimately get the say over exactly how it gets laid out and so on and so forth. But that's essentially what is being contemplated tonight, and I wanted you to at least get that basic information. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion that we open the public hearing. Is there a second? Thank you, Bill. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Myself? Aye, thank you very much. And who would like to speak first? If you'd be kind enough to raise your hand, come up to the microphone. If you wouldn't mind, tell us your name. And again, we would remind you, we would ask you to please limit your comments to...
Well, it might go over three minutes, but...
To three minutes?
The affordable housing, how many houses are you guys even talking about?
Once again, could you say your name for the...
Peter Pinto.
Thank you.
The affordable housing, how many units are we talking about?
Okay, we don't know the exact number yet. What's contemplated is somewhere between 12 and 18 single-family homes.
But that's a 10-acre parcel?
It's somewhere between 10 and 12 acres. That's right.
So you're going to change the zoning there? Isn't that R3 zoning?
No, it's not R3. This is village zoning, Peter. That's what I'm trying to tell you. All of that area there is the village. It is zoned R20,000, which means it can have a little more than two houses per acre.
Correct. Now, who's going to go into the affordable housing and what's the purpose of it?
Peter, do you have comments? We're not going to take questions and answers back.
I just want to know what we're dealing with, with the future here, because we're talking about buying a big piece of property with a lot of town money, that this money was supposed to be used for, part of it, for beautification of the town and for the upkeep of the town, $600,000 of it, am I correct?
Peter, what's your comments that you'd like for the record?
My comment is, I think there's a better use for $2.4 million. We have a town that looks distressed in most places. It's got no walking traffic. The planning hasn't been perfect. I mean, we have a sewer system that now has caused big wash suits amongst store owners and renters because it wasn't planned out right. And this looks like another thing that's not planned out right. And I can't see $2.4 million because you want beautification, which in that, what I heard is going to be another park, which I don't think Red Hook needs another park. We're not even utilizing the parks we have. That new park on Wenden Avenue, no one uses it. And now you're proposing a $2 million walkway from the existing park to that park? You can't even ride a bicycle down there. I can't even ride my motorcycle down there because the rock you put in there is too sharp. So I'm worried about the planning in the beginning, just like the solar park. Where is it going? It doesn't look like anything is planned out. You know, just to say, I'm going to take $2.4 million, we're going to buy this, we're going to buy this property. There's already a lot of the existing property that's put in conservation ready. Black Corners, all those farms in there, they've been given $750,000 to stay farms. Why do we want to keep taking the property where, which is... Don't get me wrong, I'm not against affordable housing. I'm against the idea that this utilization of money could be used in a lot of different places.
Those your comments?
So far.
Okay, I think your three minutes are up, Peter. Who else would like to go?
Okay, just for record, I'd just like to say something for the record. There is no time limit on the amount, in a public hearing, that somebody could speak.
This was adopted many years ago. Was it 2011?
We adopted it.
These are rules of order of the meeting.
Can we state the rules of order?
Yes, you absolutely may. The town clerk can provide you with them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak? If you could just come up and just say your names, that's all.
Sure, absolutely. My name is Rick East, and we reside at 7605 North Broadway, the house that's historic, that's directly across from the barn where the property is. Thank you for letting us share our concerns with you. We chose to live here because of Red Hook's unique quality, because it's charming, because the people are kind, because of the way it looks. And our goal has always been to preserve the history of our house and make sure that it stands for a long time. So we're excited to see that the town is going to purchase this property and use it in ways that will help the town to retain its charm. I'm distressed to find out now that the only property that you're going to develop, perhaps, for affordable housing is the property directly across from my house, because it does contain an historic barn that was a part of the original market farm. I'm also concerned that for the 80 years that there was an excavation company on the property, originally started by O. Cooking Ham Senior, followed up by his son, O. Cooking Ham Junior, and then by Lee, as Fast Trax, was on that property. There must be diesel tanks that held fuel for them. There must be places all up the hill, these small buildings that are there, where there might be oil or fuel that was left or dumped. There was equipment sitting all across the property all the time. So considering the age of the property, I'm curious to know, when we determine full market value of a property, isn't it the purchaser's due diligence to find out what condition the property's in? So yes, in real estate, full market value is determined as in comps, so whatever comparable properties there are in a similar size and a similar condition. But a purchaser usually goes in and does a home inspection, or if they're concerned about a buried oil tank, they do that kind of work before they negotiate a price. So you're talking about spending $2.5 million, but I'd like to know what the town has done in the meantime to determine the condition of the property before we are offering the full market value. I have one other quick thing that is a part of the survey that was done. So this is portion two, section 10. It says, "The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any building, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the National or State Historic Places, the shipboat, or has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation to be eligible." So our house directly across the street is eligible, but this box is checked, and this box is checked, yes. Also, and it says that, you know, there's the barn, which has the potential to have a shipload designation. So I'm curious to know, are we going to be protecting the barn? Are the homes that are there, are they going to be torn down? Obviously, they're going to be torn down. What kind of lead paint there may be or asbestos? How much is the cost to remediate that? And what kind of contingencies that will be written into the contract that absolve the town of responsibility and make sure that the people that own the property currently would take up any kinds of issues that happen down the road? Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm sure I went longer than three minutes.
No, you're good on your three minutes. Who else would like to speak?
Hey, doing? My name is Frank Mirelli. I live over on Butts Corners Road. Thank you, Mr. McKee, for sending me that land use report.
Sure.
I like the idea of purchasing land and preserving both farmland and affordable housing. I think it's, we should do it. We definitely should do it. My question is how we do it and why are we doing it? This is, and this is not so much to say what's right and what's wrong. What I'm just kind of throwing on the table here as a challenge is, you sent me this, what was that report? You said this Red Hook Plan Land Use Report?
It's the Community Preservation Plan.
Okay.
Adopted back in 2019 after a board worked on it and public hearings and so on and so forth.
Right. So this is the first time I looked at it, was this afternoon. I just want to note that that was done in 2019, the last revisions. World has changed since 2019, and this town has seen a lot of stress in housing. So I challenge you guys to think about this a little differently. Don't think about just 10 acres in the, under the squiggly line there. I'm not sure if that's the solution. I think we have to look at other solutions. And if you look at housing plans, intergenerational housing, cooperative housing between agriculture and affordable housing, where there's weight given to retirees, cohabitation with younger families in conjunction with farming operations, there are some really interesting models out here that I think we could look at, that, don't rush and put that whole thing into easement. Easement's rough. It's rough on farmers. It's rough on towns when they want to develop something. It's hard to make changes. So before we go into this, develop a plan that reflects today's needs, not 10, 20 years ago, and definitely not four years ago, because things have changed. You should look at some of these communities in Ithaca and Ohio that are doing things that are bringing seniors, that are bringing young people together, and bringing the agricultural community together. That's something we should look at, because I think Red Hook has the opportunity to really innovate. My concern also is, I mean, I own a large farm. My wife and I, you know, take it on this farm and we love it, great. We own a lot of land, and I talk to farmers every day who want to buy land, but they can't afford it. And this is an opportunity here to think about this farmland as a possible incubator or a possible cooperative project where multiple young generation farmers are going to be the future of the Hudson Valley agricultural movement. Is there an opportunity here? And I'm not saying, I'm not throwing an answer on the table, but what I'm challenging you guys and all of us to do is to think differently and say, is there a way that we could take this land and manage it differently to give young farmers an opportunity to increase efficiencies, to increase diversity, and talk the talk that we want to be a forward-thinking community? I'm concerned, $2.4 million, and I keep on asking people, where's the plan? I come from a design background, and I like to know what the concept is and what the fiscal responsibility is. I haven't seen those answers, so I'm hoping that over the next couple of months as we buy this thing, these get presented in clear and honest ways. I really do not want, I'm almost, you know, I don't want to be surprised because we all pay a lot of taxes here. And I'm for it, but I want it done correctly, and I'd like to challenge ourselves to do this differently. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? This public hearing is for the use of CPF funds as part of the acquisition price. Yes, ma'am, could you state your name, please?
Tara Sullivan. Anything else, address?
No, we don't need your address.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but now that I've heard that other speakers, I wanted to say, I remember when the CPF happened the first time, and the division in this town, I mean, it was just very hard on the town. But we got through it, and then in 2019, we sort of ramped it up and perfected it. And I believe that this project is the model for that intention, that the community came together, put together, and funded. So let me just say, I am completely for this project. And I believe that all of you have thought about it really carefully. I think that you've brought in experts from the town, from the community, the farmers, the young farmers, the innovators, the indigenous farmers, the black farmers, the soil experts. I know and trust you to have done your homework, and I embrace and applaud you for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tara. Anybody else like to make some comments? Anthony, if you'd be kind enough to...
Deanna? Thanks.
Hello, Anthony Formasano, Reed Road, in Upper Red Hook. Here's my question for you guys. Now, I'm a little nervous because I get a little afraid when I hear about affordable and low-income housing. Now, all the loving people in Rhinebeck that love everything on both sides of that development that they're going holistic over of 80 affordable housing units, more people showed up at the meeting than ever before at Rhinebeck meetings. So here's my question. This is going to be zoned the way it is, and I'm hoping that it's going to be, I'm 100% for the open land. I'm a little shady with the 12 to 18 homes, because I'm thinking about it. People in Rhinebeck have a lot of money, and they're going to fight this project, and I'm hoping that the five of you are not going to support when they throw that project out of Rhinebeck and try to get it up here and put it on that property of 80 low-income units. At the same time, it's very easy because the sewer system is right down the road. So for an 80-unit complex, you need sewer, it's right there, and you need property. And I want to hear from you guys tonight that you're not going to try to lure that project out of Rhinebeck into here when they throw it out of Rhinebeck. That's what I'd like to hear tonight. Are we planning on ever bringing a project like that here?
That was your comment, Anthony?
No, that's a question.
I'll try to address everybody's questions.
I'm going to just tell you one other thing, because I threw a lot of questions up a few months ago about the supervisors, and not one of you answered any of them. And if you read the minutes or if you saw the articles on the Daily Catch, every time I ask questions, we got no answers. So I'm not going to get answers again tonight, if that's going to be the end of your questions.
Take exception to that, Anthony, because I answered all your questions at that public hearing about the reasoning, the underlying reasoning and the basis for that decision. So I would appreciate it if you wouldn't mischaracterize the way we do our land.
All right, let's, your comments on the project, Anthony?
I'm not going to say anything about how you do your work, but I asked specific questions and they weren't answered. When I asked if any of you were going to take the job if he retires, I never... When I asked if any of you were going to take the job if he retires, I never got an answer. Thank you, Robert, thank you. Just watching it.
More, more comments on the project itself? Is there anybody who hasn't had an opportunity to speak who would like to speak? We will, by the way, have a second public hearing related to the other portion of the acquisition cost. And in between, I'll help try to clarify some things for you. Garrett?
Am I allowed to come and speak?
You are absolutely allowed to come in. Gary, this is your town hall. You are absolutely allowed to come in.
Well, it's my town hall. You're taking, giving me a little more than three minutes.
I do not.
Those are the rules that were laid out years ago.
Those are the rules that were laid out years ago.
For the purpose of.
Ensuring that everybody gets an opportunity.
No, stifling our abilities. A quick question for you. That property, you're going to buy that property, everything that's included, for X number of dollars. The, the on that squiggling line is going to be village property?
It is village property.
It is village property. Why are we buying village property, or do we normally do that? I'm just wanting to understand, if we're footing the bill, we're also footing the village bill? Yes, no?
Gary, I'll try to answer your questions. I'm not going to do it now. You make your comments on the project. The comments, share your concerns. I will answer your questions.
I did it in under three minutes.
I did it in under three minutes. I'll try to answer your questions for you. Clarify any, any questions any of you have to. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this who hasn't spoken?
Super, super question.
Sure.
Sure, I just have one additional question. Would you clarify for us affordable housing or low-income housing? Just because I think there's a misconception amongst the community that you're talking about low-income housing, and that's not, I think, what you're saying. I think what I hope is in our mind is that it's more aligned to what Rhinebeck is trying to do for people that are in our community, first responders, teachers, people who need assistance, farmers, whoever might need assistance in being able to afford to participate there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak before we move on to the second public hearing? Anybody who hasn't had an opportunity yet to speak?
I thought the purpose of tonight's meeting was to vote on whether that property should be purchased.
We're getting to that, Peter. Okay. Anybody else who would like to speak on this matter? Okay. So we'll keep that public hearing open. We'll move to the second public hearing. I'd like to clarify a couple of things for, for the folks, just based on the comments that we've heard. The town is going to acquire all of these properties, these parcels. We are not going to retain these properties. So when you discuss an acquisition price of $2.475 million, that is in fact correct. That is the price that we have agreed to acquire the properties for. We are not going to own a farm, own a house, own property that may or may not be available for affordable housing that is on the southern portion of this property and adjoins existing housing and multi-use. The net cost to the town, we anticipate, will be minimal when compared to the acquisition cost, because we are going to resell these properties. That is our contemplation. Okay? We, Peter, please, Peter, please don't interrupt. Please don't interrupt.
We'll use it when we sell it in the future.
Peter, I'm going to ask you nicely to not continue to interrupt our meeting.
This is my meeting, too.
It is your meeting, and you have an opportunity to speak. And you'll get another opportunity to speak. Okay? When a project is fully developed for those 10 to 12 acres, that will be up to whoever owns the property at the time to go in front of the Village Planning Board. You will be presented with something that is much more refined and something that you can and should participate in. And all of those questions as to what does the housing look like and so on and so forth, where exactly on the, on the property it is, how many units? We have absolutely no desire to sell this property to anyone who has any desire to put 80 units or anywhere near 80 units on that property. This is a novel project because it marries two important interests. But at the heart of it, it is a farmland preservation project to protect the scenic gateway to the village. And if I can use a restaurant analogy, it has a side order of some affordable housing. This is not an affordable housing project. We don't even know yet whether affordable housing can or will be constructed on those 10 or 12 acres. There's an opportunity to provide, to have funding be provided for single-family housing, which we anticipate would be better in context for the surrounding area that exists there. And better because frankly, developing adjacent to farmland is not generally a good idea, because it creates new neighbors and new potential conflicts. This property lends itself, however, to taking a look at a limited amount of development on that portion of the property and protecting all of the prime soils, or just about all of the prime soils, and those two significant fields for continued agricultural use. I hope that I have tried to address some of your answers. The good news for you is if I haven't, we're about to open a second public hearing, which is on the acquisition itself of the properties. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion to open the second public hearing.
Close.
We do not have to close, and we will not close the other hearing. Deanna, would you be kind enough to read the notice for the second public hearing?
Notice of Public Hearing Regarding Purchase of Cooking Ham Farm East in the Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on February 22, 2023, at 7:45 PM local time. Regarding the proposed purchase of Cooking Ham Farm East described below at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York 12571, to hear all interested persons regarding the acquisition of an interest or right in real property to preserve open space pursuant to Section 247 of the General Municipal Law. The proposed purchase price is $2.475,000. The town is also considering approval of the acquisition of an interest under the town's Community Preservation Fund. If so approved, the assemblage acquisition would be subject to an offset by acquisition of a conservation easement through the Community Preservation Fund. It is also proposed that a portion of the purchase price may be paid from funds available under Section 143-49.2. Cooking Ham Farm East, proposal for sale by RTC Farm LLC of an assemblage of approximately 112.94 plus minus total acres consisting of the following parcels with the following approximate acreage, all located in the Town of Red Hook, Dutchess County, New York, as listed below on the public hearing notice, and owned by RTC Farm LLC and Mary L. Cooking Ham. All interested persons are given the opportunities to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to Town Board. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk. Please take further notice that a copy of the said application is available for review at the office of the town clerk, Red Hook Town Hall. And by order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated February 9, 2023, Deanna Cockburn, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you, Deanna. Is there a second for opening the second public hearing?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor, Jacob?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
And Bill?
Aye.
And for more background, for those of you who were concerned about a large-scale development, it was our understanding that the property was about to be sold for a large-scale development. And that's when the town got involved and reached out to the sellers. And so we were very pleased to be in this position, to have this opportunity to effectuate something that is much more appropriate for our community, we believe, than a large-scale development. That said, who would like to speak, too? We take, we even take reporters, Bill.
This is a question in form of a comment. The term affordable housing hasn't been fully defined, and I just wonder if this could be also conclude a project proposed as workforce housing. Thank you.
We get your name. Yeah, what's your name?
William Kimball Daley Freeman.
Okay. Anybody else would like to make some comments on the second public hearing? Okay, Peter's going first. Three minutes, Peter.
Okay. Now, I, you kind of confused us here, because you said you're going to keep this as a greenway. Correct? So is that going to be for perpetuity? You said, you said the town is going to own it. Who's going to maintain it?
Other comments? I'm going to, I'm going to answer your question.
My comment is who's going to maintain it? And in the future, when you guys are all gone, okay? Who says it's not going to be sold as a development? I don't see what's wrong with being a development, since we have such a shortage and crisis of homes, what I'm understanding, is the whole purpose of buying this is, is that what's wrong with having a development there? Maybe it's affordable housing that they're putting up, you don't know. Have you spoke to the, the people who were going to build that or buy it? And where did we come up with the figure of 2.4, what is it, 4.7 million? When you buy bulk property, usually it's $10,000 an acre. That would put it in a ballpark of $1.4 million. Or 1.3, because it's 113 acres, right? So who, who negotiated this figure of $2.4 million? That's another question I have. And like I said, you're not guaranteeing that this property is going to be saved as a greenway coming into the town that you're so worried about. Because when you guys aren't here in 10 years, what's going to happen to that property? If you want to buy it, keep it as, keep it as perpetuity that that is a greenway. And that's my proposal. The town should buy it for that reason.
Thank you, Peter. Other comments? Garrett?
Just a quick one. Currently, they're on the tax rolls. They're paying taxes on that property. What happens when you buy it? Does it remain on the tax rolls? That's all I want to know. Because Bard keeps buying stuff and it keeps coming off. I know that's a sweet spot for you guys.
Other, other comments related to the project, Garrett?
No, that will do. And, and the answer was, it remains on the tax rolls?
Gary, I'll be answering all the questions once people have an opportunity to pose them. I'll do my best to answer all your questions for you. Anthony?
Another question that I have, it seems to be that most of us agree that we have a shortage of housing. Do we agree on that? I say yes, okay? All right. Why don't we propose to talk to Bard College? Because they probably have 40, 50, maybe even 60, I don't know, apartments in town where Bard College could put up their own housing on their own property and let the Bard residents live on the property and free 40, 50, and possibly 60 apartments in town. They're going to still come into town, because I know we always get afraid that they're not going to come and spend money into town. So why don't, I, I think it would be a better proposal. I'm not against, like I said, I'm not looking for that 80-unit thing. 12, 14 houses will be fine. We have to determine what a medium income is home, because I heard that the development that is being built now, that they were going to be 349,000 to 59,000. They're at 670,000 and 800,000. So that didn't work out too well, number one. Number two, they're ridiculously too close, and that's something that you would do in a city. You wouldn't do that in a rural area. And I was always 100% against that project, so let me voice my opinion on that. But why don't we look into talking to Bard College? You guys should do it. And let's have them build some housing and free apartments up that are already existing. And at the same time, maybe there could be some incentives for the landlords, because let's be honest, they're not going to fix the houses up as nice as they should be when they have Bard College kids and they're having parties and all kinds of things. So maybe a, 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 a plan for housing over there, which you guys don't have much of a say on that, but we could talk to Bard College. And number two, some incentives to the landlords to fix up the places for people that need housing in the development. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Would anybody else like to speak on this matter before we consider closing the public hearing? Sir? That's the last time you heard me record of you, is that, Ken? How are you doing?
Ken from Migler Lee Farm, Free Borne Lane, Tibley. I think this is a great project. Great project. It's, it's the perfect example of deserving farmland. And where you're speaking of putting the homes, it would be hard to put a plow in the ground. There's, you know, rock, our crop runs up there, so it's not conducive to farming. One concern I have, we're hearing some of the comments, is the seller did back out of the deal, and I know she is anxious to sell. So if this should take months and months to come to fruition, she might get, she might want to sell to somebody else, which is a concern. And then the only other statement I'd like to make is, setting up for the conservation easement, I think it should go, come before the Ag and Open Space Committee to have some input on how it should be set up. So you have some farmer input. So 10, 20, 30 years down the road, you know, it would be set for future use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
One other question, Robert. I don't have to come up. We're going to own it, right? The town is going to own it?
Anthony, I'll answer that. I, I thought I answered it, but I'll, I'll try to be more clear about that. Is anybody else would like to speak on this matter? Going once.
I just feel like, if you're going to put a deed restriction on it, you.
Going, going to, I'm going to answer your question, Peter.
No, I'm just thinking about a deed restriction.
Peter, Peter. Peter, I'm going to answer your question. You got to give me an opportunity to do that. Okay?
You're also going to give us an opportunity to voice our opinions, which.
I, I want your opinion, so you keep asking questions. I want your opinion.
You know, that's a two-way street. That's why, actually, in the process, we should be getting answers.
Asperta. Okay? Anybody else before we? Okay. At, at this time, I would like to make a motion to close both public hearings. Before we do that, as a matter of record, we did have some correspondence. I've received a lot of phone calls on this project. All, all were favorable. But we did receive some correspondence, I think the CAC, may I borrow yours? Wrote in on the Conservation Advisory Council writes to extend our support for the resolutions necessary for the town to protect Cooking Ham Farm East of Nine. We support the notion of permanently protecting over 94 acres of property for agriculture, water, and scenic resources while setting aside 10 to 12 acres for a housing development that will include affordable housing. The CAC understands that unlike the traditions development, this project will have affordable units that meet income thresholds as defined in state and federally funded income guidelines. This at its heart is an open space protection effort that does include some housing. Balancing land conservation with the need for affordable housing is in keeping with the goals of the CAC as we apply to the three critical lenses of sustainability in our community outreach and programs. We appreciate how the town is proceeding in its role to develop Red Hook in a way that is protective of the ecosystem while supporting human needs and our agricultural heritage. Did we close the public hearing?
No, we made a motion.
Who's second, uh, second was by?
I haven't, but I will.
You didn't have a second.
Second by Julia. Second by Julia. All in favor of Bill Hamel, Christine Kane, Jacob Testa.
Aye.
Okay. And I apologize for letting you make all of this clear. There will be a conservation easement which will permanently protect those 94 plus or minus acres on the property forever to be open and available as an agricultural and a scenic resource. The town will not continue to own the property. It will be sold to a farmer because as part of the conservation easement, there will be a covenant to farm. So it will have to be farmed. It will not be owned by us. There was a comment. Peter, no. Peter, no.
If you're selling it to a farmer, what stops that farmer from selling it in the future?
Peter, no. This is not an opportunity for you to speak. I'm asking you to be courteous to the other people who took time out this evening, okay? Permanently protected. We are not going to own it. We are not going to continue to own the house that was a part of the family farm. That is also going to be sold. We are not in the owning houses business. So the net cost to us on our town books, if you will be, we expect to be nominal. It's not going to have a financial impact on our budget. One way or the other, we've got sufficient funds in both the Community Preservation Fund, Incentive Zoning Fund, and in our unappropriated balance as well. There was some comment about Bard College should create more housing on their property to free up apartments. Bard College is in front of our town's planning board with a plan to build more dormitories. So in theory, that would be consistent with the suggestion that we heard. Comments about the seller and whether or not the closing will take place in a timely manner? Yes, of course, we all share that. We wanna do what's best for the community and for the owner of the property. And so we have been working diligently to try and achieve that. I think I have answered, or at least the best of my ability, the questions that have come before us this evening. I would like to remind you, this is not a project to build housing. This is a project that is to preserve a farm and an important scenic gateway. We do wanna advise you, however, that we are leaving a portion of the property available for those purposes, the project of which will be developed over time. And you will have, if it is in fact developed, you will have an opportunity to comment on that. And those opportunities will really take place at Village Hall with the village planning, just so you are aware of that. We wanna make sure that you are aware of that. With that being said, we are now going to do the work related to this project. And so Patrick, if you'd be kind enough to show us we're gonna continue with our environmental review. And since I used the word environmental review, I realize we had a comment about doing an environmental assessment on that property that has already begun. That is, of course, one of the conditions of the acquisition is that we have a successful environmental review on that property. Okay. We have reviewed a Part 1 EAF previously. And we now have Part 2. Patrick, if you would, please scroll down to the... Part 2 of SECR. Chris Shaw, would you like to lead us through?
Sure. Go over Ted's proposed responses on the Part 2. And just to, you're gonna hit the CPF recommendation after this.
We are.
So there's an impact. Can people kind of keep the noise down, please?
Folks, if you wanna talk to each other, would you be kind enough to do it in the hallway so that the audio can be picked up for the folks at home? Thank you.
So first, again, Ted Fink, our planner, has prepared this for the board's review. This goes through a number of potential impacts and proposes a response for each as to impacts on land. And again, the proposed action, as defined in the Part 1 that was previously reviewed by the board, identifies the purchase of the Community Preservation Fund interest in the property and then the purchase of the property for the purpose of preservation of the prime soils and soils of statewide importance. So that's the context in which the review is conducted. So the impact on land is identified as no impacts because no construction is being proposed as part of this proposal. The impact on geological features, no. Impact on surface water, no. Impact on groundwater, no. Impact on flooding, no. Impact on air, no. Impacts on plants and animals, no. Impacts on agricultural resources, no. Impacts on aesthetic resources, no. Impacts on historic and archaeological resources, Ted has checked yes. No or smaller impact may occur as to that the proposed action is contiguous to buildings listed on, listed or eligible for listing on the National or State Register. And the property may be contiguous to an archaeological site. So those are identified as yes. And we will address those in the Part 3 then. Those questions that are answered yes would be addressed in Part 3. So going on to number 11, impact on open space and recreation. And again, the question is, may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of open space resources, no. Critical environmental area, no. This town doesn't have one. Impact on transportation, no. Impact on energy, no. Impact on noise over light, no. Impact on human health, no. Consistency with community plans? The question is, the proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. The proposed answer, no. Consisting with, consistency with community character? The question is, the proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character? And the proposed answer is no.
Double negatives.
Yes. So now Ted has prepared a Part 3 which analyzes the results of that review. And in particular, with affected impacts on historical and archaeological resources, the proposed action will occur in or adjacent to potential archaeological resources. The action involves the town's acquisition of a portion of the Cooking Ham Farm and acquisition of interest in a portion of Cooking Ham Farm east of Albany Post Road using funds from the CPF and incentive zoning programs. The property consists of three parcels. It's actually 10 parcels. I'm just gonna correct that. That total approximately 112.32 acres and all parcels are included and three parcels are included in the CPF plan. But this acquisition does include all 10 parcels that were identified in the public hearing notice. And those are the parcels that are east of Route 9. And the proposed action is designed to preserve a portion of the Cooking Ham Farm for open space purposes and for potential future development of affordable housing. No construction or other alteration of the property is proposed as part of the acquisition actions. And such acquisitions must first be carried out successfully in order for the town to commit the resources needed to undertake further actions. If acquired, any alteration would be subject to separate and comprehensive assessments under SECR for any potential impacts. No plans exist at the present time to alter the site, but the town would develop a plan for future uses consistent with the obligations under the CPF and incentive zoning plans. And those are the proposed findings from the board's review. We do have a proposed resolution adopting a super determination of non-significance.
Before we do that, at this point, I would like to reference the referral. For the folks at home, before a project is funded, it goes to an appointed Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board. They review the project. They make a recommendation to the town board. We do have a memo from Marian Johnson, who chairs the committee, noting that they convened a meeting last week to review the application for town CPF funding. The committee members reviewed both aerial mapping, ag soils, CPF plan parcel list. If you look up our CPF plan, you'll see all the characteristics of a property, water, slope, ag soils, and so on and so forth. They reviewed all that. It was noted that three of the four larger parcels were included in the CPF plan. And the very small remaining ones were not. The parcels' conservation values are related to agricultural water quality protection, ecological and ag gateway, scenic corridor, scenic road. Parcel number 795956 is listed number one in Group 1 of the plan with the highest conservation score. It is also important to note that while not acknowledged in the plan, parcel 56993 maintains higher agricultural scores due to the presence of prime ag soils, part of Ag District 20, and an operating farm. The committee discussed the issues for the village, including the potential for growth and the value of the gateway. The committee members encouraged the town and village boards to collaborate on a plan that fosters appropriate growth on the land adjacent to the village and not included in the conservation easement. The committee voted unanimously to recommend that the town board fund this项的项目. So shall we move on to entertain SECR? Is it a negative declaration? Any questions, town board, before we entertain this? This resolution, Patrick? Adopting a SECR determination of non-significance regarding purchase of interests. This is related specifically to the conservation easement and other related resolution number 12. Dated February 22nd. And the resolution details the parcels. We referenced the application to the CPF Advisory Committee. We reviewed on the 9th of February, Part 1 of the EAF. We have now, this evening, reviewed Part 2 and Part 3. And the town board has reviewed a negative declaration sitting forth the reasons supporting that determination. And we believe that the proposed action, which is the acquisition, will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. And who would like to move Resolution number 12? Bill Gant, Javiah Herr. Would you like to be the second toasting? Any further comments on SECR determination? All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
And myself. Thank you very much. We have Resolution number 13, dated February 22nd. It's a resolution granting approval for acquisition of Cooking Ham Farm east of Route 9 for the purpose of preservation of open space and including the use of monies in the Incentive Zoning Fund. Before we entertain Resolution number 13, I would like to make a comment. These properties are only available for us to consider to protect, permanently protect for generations to come. These properties, this one in particular, that have a lot of meaning to the folks in the community add incredible scenic value. They're only possible because generations of people worked these lands, kept these lands open and available. And we have a unique opportunity as a community to make sure what was available to us becomes available to our children and to their children by taking these actions. These actions are just an extension of what the community wanted when it voted to have such a fund, when it voted to purchase development rights permanently off of these important lands. And I would like to, in particular, like to thank Mary Cooking Ham. I'd like to thank Riley Cooking Ham. And I especially would like to, though he is no longer with us, Lee Cooking Ham, who spent a great deal of time in our community helping folks and adding and enriching to our community as an individual and certainly by maintaining this property. It would not be possible were it not for Lee Cooking Ham. With that said, I would like to move Resolution number 13 granting approval of the acquisition of Cooking Ham Farm, the Lee Cooking Ham Farm, east of Route 9 for the purpose of preservation of open space and including the use of monies in the Incentive Zoning Fund as described this evening. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you all very much. Okay, next up? Patrick? Next up? What resolution's next?
Resolution 14 for the CPF.
Yeah.
You didn't approve it.
We're going to... 14? You got that resolution?
Yes, it was in effect. Resolution granting approval for use of money in the Community Preservation Fund. Is this a fact?
Yeah, 14. Who would like to move Resolution 14, which is granting the approval of the CPF funds for this project?
Someone.
Christine moves? Second. Jacob, second. Julia?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Resolution 14, the use of CPF funds for this project. Moving on, the next item on the agenda. We have folks who don't wanna leave. We have community and board reports. Anybody suffering from insomnia, please stay.
Community's doing a lot of good work.
It's in our delivery. It's not because of the terrific work that they're doing. It's how we deliver the reports. We'll start out with Bill Hamel doing our police report. We're ready. Folks, thank you very much again. Tonight, the police report is being brought to you by Bill Hamel.
Yeah, because I marked the quote. For the month of January, the local police, local police who are servicing the town, reported 95 incidents, including another 14 in Tibley who they're now servicing. They issued 42 traffic tickets and they made two arrests. The, in the report, it shows all the various calls they've made, various different things they've done, whether it's a road hazard or a suspicious person or traffic compliance non-adventures. So that's their, that's their report.
Thanks, Bill. Next up, we have...
Dogs.
Dogs, okay. You wanna do dogs, Bill, while you're...
Sure. So January was a light... So January was a like month, mercifully. There was one dog barge, which means there was a dog running around. It was brought home and there were two nuisance dogs, which generally means a dog was left out and barking and the neighbor couldn't find it or something of that nature. Fortunately, there were no dog bites or dangerous... Bless you. And that's it.
Very good. Bill was very short and sweet, Christine. I only mention that because you have to give the rec...
I have five pages of the Recommission's report.
And I just wanna remind you that it's inclement weather outside when you summarize for us.
Okay. Well, so as usual, the Recommission is doing great work, which is why we have such detailed reports in terms of, you know, a lot of end-of-season work and preparing equipment to go, you know, be put away for the winter. Uh, the skate park, Phase Two of the skate park improvements have now been installed. Some modifications were required and there may be some follow-up work that the team here can do. So that should be ready in the spring. Also, the dugouts for the baseball field at Rec Park West were completed in early January. Again, few more things, the metal roofs still have to go on, but the structures themselves are there. So that should be ready. Work also continues at the Red Church Cemetery project, uh, property, which is under the auspices of the Recreation Commission now. So there's a generator that has been put in place there. Still some work to be done in regards to future use of pickleball courts. We're getting a lot of demand for those. Excuse me. And the Summer Program Services Report was filed at the beginning of this month. So everything has been completed and sent to the county as, for the rec program. We are still having some unfortunate damage to the park grounds. There was some damage to the lawns at both Rec Park East and West where serious, somebody drove on the lawn and serious ruts were made. So that has, is gonna have, require extensive repair, particularly because we're having such a mild winter. So the ground was not very frozen. And the south entrance to Rec Park East has been damaged by cars and they're, as put in here, doing domets. So there will be some work that will have to be done to fix that damage once the spring is, is more with us. Tentative dates for the summer recreation playground for 2023 are July, the fifth of July to the fourth of August, just for anybody involved in early planning there. So that's it in a nutshell.
Well, who would like to give the Justice Department report?
I can do it, it's not my thing, but sure. So we have the year-end 2022 Justice Report that was submitted by Justice Mansfield. And we had a total of four hundred and eighty-three vehicle and traffic cases, twenty-nine penal cases, no civil cases, five small claims cases, one judgment, and three rules and regulations. And then one item add-on there, CPL, which I have to say, I don't know what that one is, two of those.
Procedure.
Thank you. So for fines, we received for the year just under $25,000. Civil fees, $1,870. Surcharges of just over $17,000. So a title, a total of $43,654.
Again, we also have a report for Justice Trebowiser. Who would like to give that report? Christine?
May I just do that one again? Okay. So yes, from Justice Trebowiser, we have three hundred and, this is the total for 2022, three hundred and fifty-nine vehicle and traffic, well, vehicle traffic law issues, twenty-three penal, four civil, one small claim, and one NYCRR. So for fines, just over $22,000. Civil fees, $530. Surcharges, a little over $13,000 for a total of $36,327.
Very good. We have the world's shortest tree preservation commission report. Who would like to give that?
I'll be happy to. So for the February meeting, the main topics of discussion were the arboretum celebration, which will be scheduled for Saturday, April twenty-ninth, the spring tree planting, including locations and specimen selections, and then talking about the Tree City Recognition Luncheon, which will be taking place at Bassar College on March sixteenth.
Very good. I think that's all we have for tonight's agenda, folks. Anything else?
No.
No? We will be back here on March fourteenth. We'll have a whole list of community events for you in the spring for announcements tonight. I'd like to wish you safe travels back, back home after tonight's meeting. I hope that the weather permits easy passage. On that note, very happy we got the important work of protecting what is so valuable to our community tonight. Folks, you should be very proud of yourselves for the work that you've done. On that note, I'd like to make a motion to close tonight's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any bill? All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Aye. Tonight.